Councillors, I'm about to formally open the meeting. Before we begin, please make sure your microphones and devices are on silent. Also note that should we need to adjourn the meeting, please ensure your microphones are turned off at the time as the live streaming will continue running. I now request, oh no, please note that the following, um... I now request for the live streaming of the meeting to commence. Good evening, councillors, officers and community members in attendance tonight. I also welcome councillor Sangster joining us online and any members of the public who are attending online or live streaming tonight's meeting. My name is councillor Emily Demetriades. I'm the newly-elected mayor of the city of Darabin and the chairperson of tonight's meeting. It's an incredible honour to be the mayor of this vibrant, diverse and resilient city. Over the next year, I commit to working collaboratively with councillors, our CEO and staff to deliver strong, transparent governance, excellence in local service delivery and genuine community engagement. My door will always be open and I will always be listening, willing to hear. Tonight is my pleasure to welcome you to our November council meeting. I declare this meeting open at 6:07pm. This meeting is being livestreamed and a recording will be made available on the council's website as soon as possible after the meeting. I would like to begin by acknowledging the Ruandri Waiwarrung people, the traditional owners of this land. I recognise their continuing connection to land, water and culture and pay my respects to elders past and present and extend that respect to any First Nations people here today. I would also like to welcome and acknowledge all councillors, our lead executive leadership team and officers joining us tonight. There are no apologies tonight. If any councillor or relevant staff member has a conflict of interest in relation to a matter on the agenda tonight, they must disclose the conflict of interest as well as the nature of that conflict. Any conflicts of interest must also be declared prior to the item being considered. Councillors and officers, are there any conflicts of interest to declare? Councillor Turi?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to declare a general conflict in relation to 9.4 due to a relative living in close proximity to the properties being considered.
Thank you. Is there anyone else declaring a conflict? No? If during the course of the meeting, any motion or amendment is put that gives rise to a conflict of interest, I ask that councillor to advise me at the time. Councillors, could I please have a mover for the adoption of the minutes of the ordinary councillor meeting held, meeting held on the 27th of October 2025 and the special council meeting held on 20th of November 2025? Thank you, the mover that's moved by councillor Valella. Is there a seconder? Thank you councillor Solkus. I put that motion to the vote. All those in favour? Wonderful, it's carried unanimously. It's great to see everyone here this evening. I would like to remind everyone that council has an occupational health and safety responsibility to ensure anyone attending tonight's meeting in person or online feels both safe physically and emotionally. For members of the public who are in attendance tonight, we kindly ask you to be respectful to one another and to maintain a civil tone when addressing the meeting. And remind, we remind you that members of the gallery must remain silent at all times during a meeting unless you've been invited to address the meeting. If anyone does engage in conduct that is improper or disorderly, the chairperson may direct that person to seize their conduct and the person may comply with that, must comply with that direction. We will now move on to public question time. We have allocated 30 minutes for public question time. If we exceed that time, I will ask councillors for a procedural motion to extend couns, the question time for another 30 minutes. In line with council's governance rules, questions can only be accepted from people in the gallery if the question was submitted by council before 12pm today. Submitters can ask a maximum of three questions and can speak for a total of two minutes. Please keep in mind to only ask your questions during this time and please refrain from making statements. Questions relating to notices of motions, petitions or urgent business cannot be accepted in accordance with the governance rules. For members of the public who have registered to ask a question in person, I will call your name when it is time. Once I call your name, if you do not respond, I will assume that you're not present in the gallery and one of our friendly officers will read the question on your behalf. The relevant general manager will then provide a response. For members of the public who are in attendance tonight, in, whether in person or virtually, I will invite you to come to the lectern or unmute your microphone and you can state your name and ask your question. Like questions will be grouped together. The first person who submitted a like question may ask their question. First up for questions, we have Michael Ricardo. Is Michael in the gallery today? Oh, okay. So we might come back to Michael. Is Mayan Lynn in attendance today? No. So I might ask one of our officers to read her question.
Thank you, Mayor, through you. Mayan, Mayan has one question. With reference to my question at the last council meeting about the provision of public toilets, would the council contact the state government to provide such toilets at an early stage?
I'll ask Vanessa to respond, the general manager.
Thank you for your question, Mayan, and through you, Mayor. The station development was delivered by the state government. Council officers advocated for the provision of toilets during this process. You may wish to advocate directly to the state.
Next, we have Thomas Green, who's not attending. I'll ask one of the officers to read his question.
Thank you, Mayor, through you. Thomas has three questions with regard to the Palestinian flag. Number one, by continuing to fly the Palestinian flag, does council intend to signal support for these actions or for the governing authorities responsible for them? Two, what is council's policy or framework for deciding when to take a position on international conflicts? And why are some crises acknowledged and others are not? And three, how does council ensure that Jewish residents of Darabin are not left feeling targeted or unsupported when the Palestinian flag is flown at town hall?
And we have Vanessa Petrie, the general manager, to respond.
Thank you for your questions, Thomas. I note there's been a like question for your first question submitted by Raf Richards and this will be covered in this response. As a diverse, multicultural and multi-faith community, council supports everyone in the Darabin community affected by events both locally and globally. Council acknowledges that international conflicts are deeply distressing for many individuals within our community and council stands by all community members impacted by this and other conflicts.
Raf Richards is not attending and I think he has a separate question.
Thank you. Thank you through you, Mayor. Raf's question is, what action is Darabin council taking to remove the mural at 126 A Gladstone Street that displays the slogan Globalise the Intifada?
And we have Rachel Olivia, the general manager, to respond.
Through you, Mayor. Thanks for the question, Raf. I understand you've spoken to one of our senior managers today. I do want to reiterate council's support for everyone in the Darabin community. I can also be clear that marking offensive graffiti is an offence under the Victorian Graffiti Prevention Act. And while generally graffiti on private property isn't removed by council, we do assist with removal of offensive graffiti because of the impact it can have on our community. We'll follow this up, including contacting the property owner.
And next up, we have Cameron Meston. Yes, hi. Would you like to approach the lectern? Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
I think you're, are you asking a question?
I am, yep. I'm asking a question about 9.11, the Preston High Street streetscape upgrade. And I've got three questions, actually. How will the current proposal for additional car parking, rather than dedicated bicycle lanes, align with both the strong community preference for safer cycling infrastructure and the objectives of the Victorian Activity Centre planning framework for sustainability and accessibility? My second question, how is council ensuring that its planning is in line with evidence that reallocating street space from car parking to active transport infrastructure increases foot traffic and retail turnover? And my third question, with projected population growth and the need to make the best use of limited public space, what steps will council take to ensure that the Preston High Street upgrade delivers long-term safety, vibrancy and equitable access for all members of the community, including cyclists? Thank you.
Thank you. Vanessa Petrie will be responding.
Thank you, Cameron, for your questions. And through you, Mayor, the proposed, for your first question, the proposed concept plan does not provide additional car parking spaces. Twelve on-street parking spaces would be removed. The proposal will increase the amount of car parking available for the community to use by removing clearways and this frees up space during peak hours. It's not proposed to provide cycle lanes. This is because the narrow street width would require the central median and the trees that are in the median to be removed. It would also not be possible to widen the footpath. Through consultation with our community, we identified the trees and widening the footpath are important features of the project. With two, the proposed concept plan proposes to widen both the footpaths from three metres to 3.7 metres by removing the clearways. Car parking and a lane in each direction is retained. This allocation of road space is consistent with the feedback received from the community. It will allow for increased and improved outdoor dining opportunities and allow for more fluid pedestrian movement along the street. The purpose of the project is to support population growth and to ensure High Street remains a successful activity centre that continues to serve our community into the future. The widened footpath and improved crossing will create an accessible, larger and safer pedestrian environment for walking and outdoor environment. And to improve connectivity, we are considering opportunities to improve east-west cycling access from the path under the railway line to High Street.
Next, we have Suzanne Agar, who's attending in person.
Susan Agar, West Preston. I have three questions. Question one, with the plant-based treaty due for discussion again in December alongside the forthcoming food resilience scoping study, can council confirm that before any decision to withdraw? There will be officers report assessing how existing Darabin programmes align with the treaty deliver on climate, health, wellbeing and food justice goals so that any change in position is fully transparent and evidence-based? Question two, why is our plant-based treaty endorsement being reconsidered but not similar endorsements such as the Victorian Food System Consensus Statement or Fossil Fuel Nonproliferation Treaty when all share objectives that align with and reinforce council's current environmental and health commitments? Question three, how does council reconcile withdrawing from the plant-based treaty with the Eat Lancet Commission's evidence that plant-rich diets strengthen public health, ecological resilience and food security? Thank you.
And Vanessa will be responding.
Thank you for your questions, Susan. And through you, Mayor, on the 24th of March 2025, council resolved to put delivery of the plant-based treaty on hold pending completion of the food resilience scoping study. Any recommendation for a change in council's position would be presented through an officer report outlining relevant matters for council's consideration, including alignment with existing council programmes and strategies. And council has not resolved to consider other endorsements such as the Victorian Food System Consensus Statement and the Fossil Fuel Nonproliferation Treaty. We know, so council notes the evidence that you've referenced regarding plant-rich diets and will consider this evidence and other relevance matters as a part of decision-making.
John Nugent is next. However, I might ask an officer to read out his question.
Thank you, Mayor, through you. John has three questions. The first is in regard to the unsealed path at Donath West and the question is, when will work be done and do the public have to keep reminding council of their obligations? The second question relates to maintenance at Sporting Ovals. When will council give the proper maintenance these ovals deserve? And the third relates to Keown Park Stars Junior Football Club. Can you advise if this council will compensate the Keown Park Stars Junior Football Club for the loss of revenue during the NFNL junior football finals as the ground wasn't in good condition to play on?
Rachel will be responding.
Thanks for the questions, John. And through you, Mayor, his first question is about maintenance and particularly weeds growing over the unsealed paths at Donath West. He asked about this in March this year and works were subsequently completed. Recently, of course, the rain has accelerated growth in that area and many parks and we're due to service this site within four weeks. In regards to maintenance at the ovals, council's got a range of regular maintenance programmes for lighting ovals, pathways and vegetation throughout the reserve. If there are specific maintenance concerns, we'd encourage clubs and residents to tell us about them through our customer service channels. And it's also worth sharing that council's working on a significant renewal and improvement project at the JC Donath Pavilion, which includes transition to gender-inclusive change rooms. A report about that will be coming to the next council meeting in December.
Thank you. And we have Nina Cullen, the general manager, to respond to the Keown Park question.
Thank you, John, for the question and through you, Mayor. In 2025, Darabin prepared Donath One Oval for junior community football. Following groundwork in May and in June of 2025, officers assessed the grounds and deemed them to be playable and safe for junior football. The NFNL are responsible for venue allocations and finals matches are allocated to different venues each year. Keown Park Stars Junior Football Club have not requested compensation and council is not in the practice of compensating based on NFNL decisions.
Next up is Serena O'Mearly.
Thank you, Mayor and councillors. Will council consider engaging FOMEX to establish a polystyrene drop-off point at Darabin Resource Recovery Centre, noting that residents currently have to drive to Kularoo to recycle polystyrene and that FOMEX can provide collection and processing for a nominal fee, significantly reducing the amount of polystyrene sent to landfill?
Would you like to ask all your questions, Miss O'Mearly?
They're all very different, so, okay. Number two, Reservoir Views Primary School has recently removed more than half a dozen mature native trees from its grounds and if a permit was issued for this work, could Darabin council explain why it was granted? And the third one is, Darabin council is reportedly reviewing all of its consultative committees, including the Darabin Aboriginal Advisory Committee, which has over 20 years of valued service. Can council confirm whether the committees are at risk of being abolished? Thank you.
Thank you. Rachel Olivia will answer the first two questions.
Thanks, Serena. In terms of polystyrene recovery, we've got something in progress. We've, let's see, where are we up to? So the team have sought interest already from organisations able to provide a collection at the Darabin Resource Recovery Centre and we're in the assessment stage of that. We expect to be able to start collecting from early 2026. In terms of the trees at Reservoir Views Primary School, it's a state government property. We don't believe that it's triggered permits in this case and so we haven't issued a permit.
Thank you. And I believe Vanessa Petrie will be responding to the advisory committee's question.
Thank you. And through you, Mayor, council is undertaking a scheduled review of its advisory committees and in June this year, council resolved that all committees would sunset on the 31st of December 2025, pending the outcomes of the review. And while no decisions have yet been made, council expects to consider the review outcomes at the December council meeting and will update current committee members in the coming weeks.
Thank you. Just a follow-up on that. The rumour is that all of the committees are going to be permanently abolished. That's the rumour that's going around the community. So can, can you speak to that? Permanently?
Sorry, Serena, you've asked your three questions.
Yes, you're allowed to follow up under the governance rules.
Sure. I think that your question was an assumption though. Councillor, sorry, Vanessa has already responded to your question.
She said that they will sunset in December but she hasn't confirmed whether there's an intention of council to in fact abolish them all as part, as part of that December meeting.
I believe that that's what will be coming to council in December. Did you want to respond further, Vanessa?
Thank you, Mayor. Notes to reiterate that a report will come forward to December and committee meeting, committee members will be updated in the current, in the coming weeks.
Thank you.
Thank you. So that concludes question time. We're now going to move on to submissions. Our governance rules permits members of the public to register to address an ordinary council meeting in relation to reports listed on the agenda. Thank you to those who have registered this intention to do so. Tonight, we have received six requests to make submissions. As we have a full, very full agenda this evening, I will ask you to make your submissions now rather than wait until the agenda item. If you have registered to make a submission, I will call your name and invite you to come to the lectern to speak for two minutes. To start, we have three submitters in relation to item 9.7, Darabin council's memorial to councillor Greco. I'm sorry to interrupt. I think, yes, sorry, we missed. So Michael Ricardo, just to go back to question time. Michael Ricardo was attending online, but is he available now online? Oh, sorry, he hasn't come on? Oh, yes. So Anna will be reading his question.
Sure, thank you. Through you, Mayor. Michael has two questions in relation to our enterprise agreement. The first is, what is the specific rationale for council's current position regarding the inclusion of ASU staff in the multi-employer bargaining agreement? And the second question, furthermore, on what grounds has the council determined to take a different approach to these entitlements compared to the standards currently being adopted by neighbouring councils?
And the response will be provided by Carolyn, the general manager.
Thank you, Michael, for your question. Council is currently undertaking a ballot to determine whether staff support a multi-employer agreement or a single employer enterprise agreement. The vote is open to all staff, including union members. The outcome of this ballot will guide our next steps. Regarding the second question, running a ballot is the same process that was undertaken by seven other councils who are participating in the multi-employer agreement, with each council only consenting to join after receiving a mandate from their employees through a ballot.
Thank you. Now, moving back to submissions, as we were saying, given we have a very full agenda this evening, I will ask submitters to make their submissions now. To start, we have three submitters in line with item 9.7, which is Darabin council memorial to councillor Greco. I now call Agapi Pasios to speak for two minutes.
Press on that. Thank you, Mayor, and congratulations to both you and Matt Turi for your, Mayor and deputy mayor. I speak tonight on behalf of many community members who want to make our position absolutely clear. We want the intercultural centre named after councillor Gaetano Greco. Gaetano was not just a councillor. He was a tireless advocate for social justice, migrant rights and community empowerment. He earned the trust of the people. Fifty-seven per cent of the primary vote is not just a number. It is a powerful statement of who the community believed in. And it is important to say this clearly. Gaetano pushed for the establishment of the intercultural centre. He worked for years to ensure Darabin had a place that genuinely reflected our city's multiculturalism. our city's multicultural identity. Somewhere that people from every background could connect, organise and belong. Naming the Intercultural Centre after him is not symbolic. It is accurate. It places his name where his work lived. It connects his legacy directly to one of the most significant multicultural achievements in our municipality. We understand the administrative issues, the timeliness, the policies. But community voice matters too. And the community is saying, honour Gaetano where it matters most. Name the Intercultural Centre after him. This is a tribute that aligns with his values, his advocacy and the work he fought for right up until the end. It is what the people want and it is what reflects the truths of his legacy. Thank you.
Thank you, Agapi. I now call Matthew Gueyelmi to the lectern.
I also want to acknowledge the election of Emily and Matt Aturi to the position of Mayor and Deputy Mayor. So congratulations to you both. Dear Mayor, councillors and community members, I'm being a longstanding resident and committee member of Reservoir and have observed very closely councillor Greco's immense contributions to civic life in Darabben and beyond. I advocate that subject to approval from councillor Greco's family that Darabben Council takes steps to rename the Intercultural Centre in councillor Greco's honour. I argue that it'll be less costly to implement than the proposal put forward by council officers to actually allocate funds of $10,000 towards a park bench to rename the Intercultural Centre. And I would actually argue, contrary to what the opinion of council officers have expressed in their report, that the renaming of the Intercultural Centre is highly complex. I argue that the compliance with requirements are already in place. I point to the petition of around 500 signatures as evidence of widespread community support. I also note that councillor Greco had immense support in the North West Ward, as demonstrated by 57.84% of the primary vote. I also argue that perhaps there could be steps to look at to see whether an exemption could be reviewed to the two year posthumous exemption rule. I would argue that councillor Greco's immense contributions to civic life, the extraordinary circumstances in which that exemption be considered. So therefore, I put forward that the Intercultural Centre be named as an appropriate tribute to councillor Greco. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Matthew. I now call on Nisanthi Dhanayaki.
Thanks. Also congratulate Emily and Matt for their new appointment. And yeah, basically, my submission is also follows what Agapi and Matthew brought up. So I am, as currently the president of the Darabben Ethnic Communities Council and I worked within the Darabben area, particularly on ethnicity, diversity and also various other programmes with the community. And for us, it's very important to have Gaetano Greco's just primarily to, this is subject to consulting Gaetano's family, but the most appropriate commemoration of his extraordinary service to the community is to name the Darabben Ethnic Intercultural Centre in his honour. And also councillor Greco advocated for ethnic communities in Darabben and beyond. So the Intercultural Centre is a project that councillor Greco fought for and naming the centre in his honour is appropriate as it is most fitting tribute to his legacy. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dhanayaki. I now call on David Taylor, who has requested to make a submission in relation to item 9.8, Melbourne Water Flooding Map Submission from Council.
Thank you, Mayor. Since 1924, valley lines in larger catchments have been serviced by Melbourne Water drains and this remains so. Numerous council drains with perhaps a two year rainfall event capacity connect into the Melbourne Water Main Drains, which are larger and usually contain the 10 year flood event. When these pipes reach, or when the drains reach pipe full capacity, the stormwater generated by a major rainfall event needs to go somewhere. Because the main drains are located along valley or drainage lines, overland flow generally occurs along their path. It's at this time when pipes are full, valley lines are flowing and major roads with big surface areas are acting like rivers that Darabben experiences its greatest flood risk. While it's extremely difficult to rectify many overland flow flood problems in older urban areas, we can't do nothing. The climate sciences is telling us that greater rainfall intensity in more extreme storm events will occur. In addition, the problem is exacerbated by intensification of development and related increases in imperviousness and runoff. Hence, the point of my submission is that in responding to Melbourne Water, council must be clear in its focus on overland flow flooding and the need to start doing something about it. Unfortunately, the proposed council's submission is skewed in its focus. For example, the submission argues that Darabben's three creeks are, quote, "central to climate adaptation and flood management", unquote, even though flooding from our creeks is simply not the critical issue in Darabben. Most disturbingly, it is further argued that these waterways, quote, "convey overland flow during heavy rain". This runs together the two separate sources of flooding, riverine flooding and secondly, overland flow along valley lines. This confusion must be addressed in the submission to Melbourne Water. Darabben's focus must be squarely on overland flow associated with larger catchments that Melbourne Water is responsible for draining via its main drains, but which council is a significant contributor to. In conclusion, it's all very nice to have updated flood mapping, but the critical point is that Melbourne Water must also start flagging some definitive intentions. Darabben, as a partner in flood management, must urge Melbourne Water to act on this new information and develop proposals for flood mitigation works that Darabben can then add value to.
Thank you, David. I now call on Kemran Meston, who has requested to make a submission in relation to item 9.11, High Street Streetscape Upgrade Final Concept Plan.
Hello again. I commend council for recommending a 30 kilometre an hour speed limit on High Street, Preston. This is a positive step towards a safer, more vibrant precinct that encourages people to visit and support local businesses. However, I am concerned that the current concept plan does not reflect the principles of the Preston Activity Centre or the strong community preference for safer cycling infrastructure. The plan does not include bicycle lanes, despite council's own engagement showing much greater support for bike lanes than for additional car parking. In fact, more than twice as many community members express concern about cyclist safety as those supporting more car parking. The concept plan inaccurately claims that adding a bike lane is only possible by removing the central median due to the narrow width of High Street. However, bike lanes can be installed in place of the car parking that is proposed to be added from clearway removal. The Victorian Government's Preston Activity Centre Plan endorsed by council calls for a sustainable, accessible urban core with safe, direct bicycle connections. With over 10,000 new homes planned, it is neither feasible nor sustainable to rely on car parking. The best use of public space is to enable safe and active transport options. Installing bicycle lanes will enhance safety for all, especially cyclists and pedestrians, support local businesses by increasing the number and diversity of visitors, aligned with community preferences and planning objectives. There is strong evidence that reallocating space from car parking to active travel, especially bike lanes, not only improves safety and accessibility, but also benefits local businesses through increased foot traffic and retail activity. I respectfully request that council revisit the proposal and prioritise dedicated bicycle lanes on High Street, Preston, instead of parking through clearway removal. This will best serve the long term interests of the community and local businesses and help make High Street a vibrant, accessible and sustainable destination for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Kemran. Our final submitter tonight is Karen Large, who is online and who has requested to make a submission in relation to item 9.13, Energy Support Programme.
Hi, thank you. I'm here tonight speaking on behalf of Darabben Climate Action Now, or DCAN. And thank you, Mayor and councillors, for the opportunity to make a submission on the Climate Emergency Energy Support Programme. DCAN is very happy to see this initiative from the Climate Emergency Plan brought before council tonight. And we congratulate staff who have developed the programme after much detailed work. We're particularly happy because the 200,000 allocated to this initiative was achieved following a community campaign back in April, urging council to fully fund climate initiatives in the budget. Over the past few years, DCAN has consistently received feedback from the community that residents who are keen to electrify their homes feel overwhelmed by an avalanche of information and don't know where to start. The Energy Support Programme will provide the expert and trusted help that residents need to take their first steps in making their homes more comfortable, energy efficient and cheaper to run. In February last year, DCAN ran an Electrify Your Home Masterclass, supported by a council grant. The project was very successful. Twenty-four participants were highly appreciative of the one on one advice and 36 home upgrades were completed or commenced, leading to significant ongoing savings and reductions in carbon pollution. DCAN has also recently set up a free advisory service with the help of a volunteer who is a retired energy expert. In just the space of a few months, we've had 35 Darabben residents booked for service to have a chat with him. Clearly, the need is out there. DCAN fully supports the targeting of the programme's rebates to low income households. Annual survey results from the group's weltering cities show alarming stories from households putting up with unbearably hot and cold homes because the price of installing new appliances is out of reach for them. The Energy Support Programme will provide the support that Darabben residents need to reduce their energy bills and live in healthier and safer homes. Every household making the switch to electric powered by renewable energy will also help prevent dangerous climate change. And it's great to see Darabben Council supporting the community to achieve this. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. We're now going to move on to petitions. Councillors, do we have any petitions this evening? Councillor Aturi?
Thank you, Mayor. I seek to table a petition concerning a request for a community garden at Lesley Reserve, which is at the corner of St Visions Road and May Street in Reservoir, to be referred to the CEO for consideration and response. I also note that the petition has been signed by approximately 150 people but does not comply with the council's governance rules. Given that the petitioner is a minor and a large number of the signatures are from children of the community, I ask that the Chair use their discretion under section 16.22 of the governance rules to allow the petition to be tabled.
Thank you, councillor Aturi. I mean, how could we say no? I certainly allow the petition to be tabled. Can you please read the text of the petition?
Thank you, Mayor. The petition calls for a community garden to be built at Lesley Reserve at the corner of St Visions Road and May Street in Reservoir. The petitioner has retrieved signatures from all over the suburban local area in support of the project. Support ranges from teachers, parents, neighbours and local children. The petitioner also loves to garden, in particular, snow peas, carrots and lettuce, but struggles to grow vegetables in her own garden. She and her friends have worked very hard to get all the signatures in support. Her plan is to plant many vegetables and to place a community garden near the back of the park and put sprinklers in the area to help grow the produce. The petitioner says that it would also provide an opportunity for local children to learn about plants, fruits and vegetables. The community could also make healthy foods from the produce grown. This could also be useful in the promotion of healthy eating in the community. It could also assist with reducing plastic waste that we get from supermarkets and assist with the cost of living difficulties facing local families. Further, the closest community garden is in Greensborough and the petitioner hopes that the council accepts the petition.
Thank you, councillor Aturi. Do we have a second to the tabling of the petition as moved by councillor Aturi? Great, that's seconded by councillor Tsalkos. I now call on Ayn Azur as the submitter of the petition to make a two minute submission.
Hi, I'm Ayn. I'm nine years old and in grade three at Reservoir Views Primary School. I want to talk to you today about my idea for a community garden at Lesley Reserve in Reservoir. I came up with this idea when I thought about people who can't access a garden. I thought I should do something about it, so I thought about it and my solution was to build a community garden. I was learning about democracy in school and this helped me learn and understand what I need to do. With the support of my friends, Charlotte, Addie and Alana, I asked my friends and teachers at school for signatures. Then I went with my mum and we door knocked at the houses all around Lesley Reserve. Finally, I made it to 150 signatures. I think it's important because it's a good way to connect to the land. It's also a good way to include other people and make new friends. A community garden will also help us be healthy eaters. I would like the council to set up a community garden at Lesley Reserve. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you, Ayn, and good on you for advocating for your community. It's impressive. Okay, I'll put that motion to the vote councillors. All those in favour? And that's carried unanimously. Thank you. So councillors, moving on, we have a large agenda this evening that we must aim to get through in line with the time limits in our governance rules. Questions of officers will be permitted prior to the commencement of debate on each item. If I think sufficient questioning has occurred, I'll exercise my right under the governance rules to limit questions and ask the debate to commence. I will also ask that only the mover, seconder and any councillor against a motion speak to the motion. The first report we have to consider this evening is the 2526 Quarter One Performance Report Financial, ending the 30th of September 2025. Councillors, do you have any questions of the officers regarding this item? No? I will then ask for a mover of the motion. Is there a mover? Thank you, councillor Aturi. Do we have a second for this motion? Councillor Julia O'Brien, does the mover wish to speak?
Very briefly, thanks, Mayor. Thanks, councillors, for all jumping at the opportunity to move this motion. But I want to thank the officers for this very detailed report that comes to us once a quarter. It's always good to see where projects are up to. I particularly appreciate the traffic light system that we have in the report that gives the community in particular an update on where things are at and if there are any delays, what the reasons for those delays are. I also, someone's phone's ringing. I also want to highlight clause four of the motion in relation to the CEO's authorisation to submit any grant applications for projects that have been budgeted in the four year capital works budget. I think this is very important, councillors, because we want to send a clear message to partners and particular other levels of government through their grant opportunities that Darabben is a willing and committed partner to collaborate with them, to deliver projects for the benefit of the entire city. So on that note, I commend the motion to the chamber.
Thank you, councillor Aturi. Do we have a second, the second, Julia O'Brien, would you like to speak?
Thank you, Mary, yes, I will. So I just wanted to highlight an element from the report that is dear to my heart and I know is of interest to others in the community as well, and that's responsible investment. And the strong position that council is in when it comes to this and how we should have the confidence to do more and better in this space. This latest financial report shows that as of 30th of September, 70% of all invested funds, including cash at bank, were placed with institutions that do not fund fossil fuels. And once we exclude the operating accounts used for day to day transactions, the report continues to alert us to, the financial figure, or the figure here, rather, rises to 99%, which is above our target range. And this is a significant achievement. It proves that council can invest ethically, honour our climate emergency commitments and still deliver strong financial performance. The report tells us that our portfolio generated 810,000 in interest at an annualised return of 4.45%. I'm not doing well with numbers this evening. This is competitive. This is competitive and prudent for us. It reinforces a simple but powerful truth. Ethical investment does not come at the cost of financial returns. If anything, it strengthens our long-term position by reducing risk and aligning us with global market shifts. Looking ahead, this sets us up to broaden our responsible financial lens. One question worth exploring is whether our operational accounts could be moved to more ethical institutions, further embedding responsible practice. On the investment side, our fossil-free approach is clearly working and that success positions us to take the next step, considering how our investment policy might reflect other ethical priorities to our community. So investing isn't just good for us, it's about avoiding harmful industries, it's about ensuring public money supports the values and future we're trying to build. And this report shows we have a solid foundation to build on and I believe we're ready to take the next step in the conversation. Thank you.
Thank you councillor O'Brien. Are there any councillors who wish to speak in opposition to the motion? Are there any other councillors that'd like to speak? If there's no further debate, I will put this item to the vote. All those in favour? And that's carried unanimously. Moving on to report number 9.2, the Project and Initiative Budget Adjustments. Councillors, do you have any questions of officers regarding this item? Do I have a mover of the motion, councillor Alaris?
Thank you. Could we get the motion up on the screen, please? Thank you. That's all. Okay. Colleagues, I rise...
Oh, sorry councillor Alaris, I just have to ask for a second. Sorry. Councillors, do we have a second for the motion? Oh, sorry Julie. Thank you councillor O'Brien. Councillor Alaris, would you like to speak?
I would, thank you. So councillors, I rise in support of this motion. What's before us tonight is a meaningful improvement in how we manage and report on our budget. By establishing two new projects, one for Capital Works and one for unallocated operating projects and special initiatives, we will now receive a clear monthly report that strengthens transparency, accountability and good governance. It allows us to make regular and responsible adjustments to our budget throughout the year and to respond quickly to emerging priorities or unexpected challenges. So, for example, this month you'll see that the KP Hardman Pavilion came in $340,000 under budget and so the capital report proposes to redirect that money. I want to highlight two of the proposed projects that we will fund as a result of these adjustments if you vote in favour of this motion. So firstly, gender-inclusive upgrades at John Kane Memorial Park. This motion adds $260,000 to the state government's commitment of $500,000, enabling the project to progress to tender. We know that only about 33% of people playing sport in Darabben are women and girls and the lack of gender-inclusive facilities remains a clear barrier. As Northcote City Football Club has put it, inclusive facilities are no longer optional, they are essential. Backing this upgrade reinforces our commitment to equality and shows the state government we can deliver on co-funded projects, encouraging their continued partnership with us. Secondly, interim support for the Darabben Falcons V F L W team. The Falcons are sadly facing a $50,000 short-term gap after missing out on adequate funding from the Australian Football League. A deeply disappointing outcome for a club that has done more than almost any other to advance women's football. The $15,000 allocation proposed tonight is a one-off support to help them bridge that gap. Importantly, the Falcons have a strong plan in place to ensure long-term sustainability, but they need support this year to make their plan come to fruition. The Darabben Falcons V F L W team are an original feeder team for the AFLW. They continue to develop elite talent and they are proudly committed to remaining in Darabben. The Darabben Falcons Sports Club, more generally, recently named Darabben's Community Group of the Year, are true trailblazers for inclusive sport. With more than 800 and women and girls playing at the club, they make up 22% of all female participants in sport in Darabben. Colleagues, these adjustments strengthen our financial management and they strengthen our community and I commend this motion.
Thank you councillor Alaris. Councillor O'Brien, as the second, would you like to speak to the motion?
I'll reserve my right, Mayor, thank you.
Are there any councillors who wish to speak in opposition to the motion? Are there any other speakers to the motion? Councillor, oh councillor Julie, councillor Ruth Jellie.
Thank you, Mayor, and I do appreciate you offering the opportunity to speak briefly. I'll try and keep it into less than one minute. I would like to indicate that I support particularly the red sections of this motion here to support the Darabben Falcons because I believe that as the proxy to Christine Alaris on the Gender Equity Committee, this is an organisation that provides enormous support and in terms of social connection, wellbeing, mental health and physical health to women and girls in our community. And that is something that we need to be supportive of at council. It is very much aligned with our council plan and we'll see later on, we've got a report coming to us about leisure contracts and one of the strategic goals that we are striving towards at Darabben Council is to increase the participation of women and girls in sport. So I would like to, I wish we weren't needing to have to offer this particular financial support to the Darabben Falcons. I really deeply wish that those organisations that have much larger budgets and much more accommodation for those sorts of clubs than we do in Darabben would come forward. So I call out to those other organisations to step up and put their hand in their pocket just as we have done here. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Jellie. Are there any other speakers to the motion? Councillor O'Brien, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you, Mayor. I think most of what needs to be said has been covered. We know that the budget situation here is tight. This report is very welcome and I want to thank our CEO for identifying the opportunity for us to bring this into our reporting mechanisms. It helps build transparency and trust with the community. I think there are ways for us to finesse the approach going forward so that we're all happy and seeing it doing the things that we want it to do. And I think for me, I absolutely agree with supporting the gender diversity of our clubs and we know sports are an important part of our community. But we also know that there are lots of other important things in our community and so I look forward to this helping us inform us all to be better informed as we go into the next budget cycle and looking at how we're spending our dollars that are ever decreasing. And yes, call on others to support us in this and support the clubs and other worthy causes around us. Thank you.
Thank you councillor O'Brien. I'll put this item to the vote. All those in favour? And that's carried unanimously. So the next report we have on the agenda for this evening is 9.3, To Wingrove Street Althington Master Plan Project. Councillors, do you have any questions to the officers regarding this item? Nope. So do we have a mover for the motion? Councillor Turri, thank you. Do we have a second? Councillor Selkos, does the mover wish to speak?
Very briefly, Mayor. I just want to thank officers again for bringing this report to council. I know this has been a hot topic of discussion over many, many years and obviously I note your role in that, Mayor, as well, given that it does sit in your local community. The report notes a number of things, including the preliminary feasibility study, the first round of community consultation, an update on the establishment of the CRG, which is particularly important when we consider the community's role in the future of this site. And of course, we have updated project timelines in accordance with the report. I don't intend to go into those in the interest of time, but I will be supporting the motion. Thank you.
Thank you councillor and councillor Selkos, would you like to speak to the motion?
I'll reserve my right, Mayor.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers to the motion? Councillor Selkos, would you like to... No? Okay, I'll put the item to vote. All those in favour? And that's carried unanimously. The next report we have to consider this evening is 9.4, Darabben Property Expression of Interest, Trent Chwan. Oh, sorry, yes councillor Turri.
Sorry, Mayor, I just want to re-announce or re-whatever my conflict, I've got general conflict with this item due to a relative living in close proximity to some of the properties being considered, so I'll exit the chamber.
Thank you. Councillors, do we have any questions of officers regarding this item? Nope. Do we have a mover to the motion? Councillor Julia O'Brien? Is there a second? Councillor Ruth Jellie? Does the mover wish to speak?
Thank you, Mayor. Just to outline, I guess what's before us has a number of submitters, one, two, three and down to, sorry, five that are included in 3B, sorry if we could scroll. And just then, yes, submitter six is a slightly different one. So just to note that for people engaging in this, the named parties are in the confidential item in the background of this. But just to say, I guess it was very heartening to see the level of engagement from the community to put themselves forward for some of these properties and we look forward to seeing how they progress and hopefully doing good things with many people in our community related to these properties. Thank you.
Councillor Jellie, would you like to speak as a second?
I'll reserve my right, thank you, Mayor.
Sure. Are there any other speakers? Councillor Jellie, would you like to speak?
No, thank you, Mayor.
Okay. So I'll put that item to the vote. All those in favour? And that's carried unanimously. We'll ask councillor Turri to come back to the meeting. Okay, so we're moving on to the next report, which is item 9.5, Draft Domestic Animal Management Plan 2026 to 2029. Councillors, do we have any questions to the officers? Do I have a mover for the motion? Councillor Boglas, this is moved by councillor Boglas. What about a second? Councillor Valella, does the mover wish to speak?
Yes, I do, Mayor, thank you. I rise to speak in support of the updated animal management plan being released to the public for consultation. As a member of the Animal Management Committee, having been a pet owner of two rescues and understanding the complexities and challenges involved in balancing animal welfare, community needs and council resources, I also recently spoke at the Preston Market chats with a councillor where I met with residents who have rehomed stray animals but struggling to manage this. So sending this plan out to community feedback is a necessary and transparent step. It gives our residents, pet owners and non-pet owners alike, the opportunity to shape how Darabben manages animal safety, wellbeing and responsible ownership over the coming years. I also want to acknowledge how many people in our community are doing it tough and, you know, these people are quietly assisting our animals in need, whether caring for lost pets, supporting community cats or helping neighbours who are struggling to manage their animals due to financial and health barriers. So these residents often step in out of compassion and they do so without recognition or resources. Consultation will give us the chance to hear all of these stories directly and to understand what's working, where the gaps are and how council can better support animal welfare in a way that is fair, humane and sustainable. So I fully support this plan going out to consultation because it's the community's voice that will ultimately make it stronger, more balanced and more compassionate for all of us. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you councillor Boglas. Councillor Valella, would you like to speak as a second?
I reserve my right too, no, thank you.
Sure. Are there any other councillors who'd like to speak to the motion? Councillor Sangster?
Thank you three, Mayor. Yes, I'd also like to speak in support of this. This plan recognises something simple and true, that the bond between people and animals is part of our hearts and our community and because of that we have to manage it with duty and clarity and compassion. And this draft damp lays out a thoughtful and balanced path. It strengthens training for our officers, which is really important, ensuring that they're supported and they're skilled and they're safe. It deepens our commitment to responsible pet ownership through education, clearer off-leash guidance and de-sexing initiatives that will prevent hardship before it begins. It confronts the difficult issues with honesty, overpopulation, unnecessary euthanasia and the need for stronger registration systems to help animals find their way home. Importantly, it looks outward as well as inward, improving rehoming outcomes with our partners, lifting standards in domestic animal businesses and responding to the growing evidence about the impact of unconfined cats on wildlife. With many councils already moving to night time or 24-hour curfews, this plan keeps us aligned with best practice while allowing for careful local consideration. What we have here is a plan that is steady, humane and future-focused and a plan that understands that good animal management is really about good community and making somewhere an ecology that is, you know, full of love for everyone. So I just think it's a really great beginning and for these reasons I support the officer's motion and commend the draft damp to the chamber. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Sangster. Are there any other speakers to tonight's motion? Councillor Julia O'Brien?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to add a couple of points, I guess reflecting things that I've heard deeply and on numerous occasions from the community in relation to dog-off lead behaviour in particular and some of the concerns that that raises for people in our community. As the pet parent to a large dog that has a bit of a wolfhound in her, she's a beautiful looking dog, but her bark is big and I wouldn't dare have her off-leash personally because she's got a strong will and sometimes she will not come back to me. I admire people who have that level of control over their dogs, but not everybody does and not everybody in our community feels safe and trusts when that that's the case. So I just think it's something for us to bear in mind. The other thing I wanted to call out was the 70% support for cat containment that we see in the feedback. And as somebody who's keeping a keen eye on how this is progressing through other councils, I believe that's one of the highest support rates that I have seen for that. And again, as somebody who has had two rescue cats and was told I would have to keep them indoors because they had little pink noses and that makes them exposed and more vulnerable to cancers. I kept them indoors, I've always kept them indoors, but it was the first time I've ever done it and it did feel challenging to begin with, but it's been the right decision for them and they've lived long, happy lives. And so that's just something for us to keep in mind as we go forward. Thank you.
Thank you councillor O'Brien. Do we have any other speakers on this agenda item? Councillor Valella, would you like to respond? No? So I'll put the item to vote. All those in favour? And that's carried unanimously. Councillors, I'd like to ask for a 10-minute break. Do we have a procedural motion, a mover for the procedural motion? Councillor Ruth Jellie?
Yes, I'd like to move a procedural motion that we adjourn for 10 minutes.
And do we have a second? Councillor Valella? All those in favour? And that's carried unanimously. Thank you. Sorry councillors, I just wanted to remind you that if you could keep your microphones off because the live stream is still going ahead. Awesome, thank you. Um, sorry councillors, I just wanted to remind you to, that your, if you could keep your microphones off, um, because the live stream is still going ahead. Awesome, thank you. Yep, we're ready to, oops, that's a bit loud. Uh, thank you. Okay, so we're moving on to the next report for tonight and that's, um, item 9.6 Kindergarten Expansion Programme Update. Councillors, do we have any questions of officers? Councillor Bogliss?
Thank you, mayor. Um, just a question for officers. Um, if you could please let, let us know, uh, what the difference is between receiving a briefing and a report to council.
Thank you, if I may through you, mayor. Um, thank you for the question councillor. The one of the differences between a briefing and a report is the briefing gives the opportunity for conversation across all councillors and it can be done and achieved in a shorter timeframe. By the time it, the time it takes to provide a briefing and follow-up report is an extra month on top of that. So it's a shorter timeframe that's involved, um, for councillors to consider the information.
Uh, councillor Ruth Jelly?
Thank you through you, mayor. Um, just following on from that, I'm, I'm curious to understand more that if we, uh, requested a briefing to come to council, if during the process of the briefing, um, we felt it would be, like, would we have the opportunity to request a formal report to come to, um, council after that?
Uh, Nina?
Thank you, yes, you could do that.
Any other questions? If there's no further questions, we will commence the debate. I remind you that once we enter debate, there will be no further questions. Uh, do I have a mover of the motion? Councillor Bogliss? Um, do we have a second off for this motion? Councillor Angela Valella, does the mover wish to speak?
Yes, I do, thank you, mayor. Over the past year, I have visited kinders in Preston West, including J S Gray Kinder, with council officers and also met with our local member Nathan Lambert. I've spoken directly with families and the parenting committee who have contacted me repeatedly about concerns they've raised, um, coming into, uh, our future term. What they're experiencing is not theoretical. Many parents are now being redirected to services far from home and this is creating real hardship for families who rely on predictable and accessible care. It's especially difficult for single parents and for those who are managing pick-up times for two different children across different sites. So the current projections show that Preston West will require 39 additional spaces by the year 2028 and 253 by the year 2036. This is the highest growth percentage in our municipality. Behind these figures are real children who deserve access to a local kindergarten and real families who are asking for us to respond. So this, this amendment requests that council write to the Minister for Education with the support of the mayor to formally acknowledge both the current and projected unmet demands. It seeks funding so that families are not displaced for their own neighbourhood. It also asks that council receives a briefing next year, uh, early next year, sorry, on the outcomes of this advocacy. Our community have been very clear, uh, with, with emails to me and calls, um, quite consistently throughout my, my first term. Families want their children to learn close to home. They want a system that is fair, that recognises needs and that supports them to the balance of work, care and daily life. This amendment reflects those voices and calls for action, uh, that is timely and responsible. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you councillor Bogliss. Uh, councillor Valella, would you like to speak to the motion?
Um, yes, thank you, thank you, mayor. Um, and with pleasure, thank you councillor Bogliss for, um, the really important additional points you've added. I think sometimes it just, um, beggars belief that we even have to advocate for fundamental human right being the right to education, which kindergarten is part of it. Um, and, uh, you know, in, we live in a very wealthy country and yet we have to, uh, put forward, um, such advocacy which is just a no-brainer if we respect, um, the need for young people to have and families, um, to have access to quality kindergarten, um, experience, close to home and where the family or siblings can go to the same, um, kindergarten. I, I, I don't think we're asking for anything that is beyond, um, what I would consider, um, uh, appropriate in a wealthy country like ours. So, um, keeping that in mind, we, we have to advocate. And so I, I welcome, I welcome councillor's addition and let's hope that the Minister for Education takes heed um, and acknowledges the, uh, the, um, the gaps of funding in, um, in Darabben. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, are there any other speakers tonight on this item? Given, oh, councillor O'Brien.
Sorry, thank you, mayor. Um, that was a late hand up. Um, I guess just to, yeah, to support the overall intention of this being um, a focus on kindergarten care in this community and how much we provide of it and how much we support and how much other levels of government support. It is really important that we stay on top of the numbers and the demand that's there and uh, I guess just leaning back on some of the work that we've discussed recently and the things that we know that are coming to us with increased populations coming to Preston and to Thornbury through activity centres and our own housing, um, targets into the future. We need places for, uh, young children to go to school, so look forward to, um, yeah, having this progressed. Thank you.
Uh, thank you. Councillors, if there's no further debate, I will put this item to the vote. All those in favour? And that's carried unanimously. Uh, the next report we have to consider is item 9.7 Darabben Council Memorial to councillor Gaetano Greco. Councillor Valella, would, um, do you have any questions to officers?
No.
No. Um, I note that earlier we had a submission from Agapi Matthew Nishanathie, uh, regarding this item. If there's no, uh, questions to officers, do we have a mover of the motion? Councillor Valella? Uh, and do we have a second off? Oh, is that your motion on the screen? Is that the motion? Yeah. Uh, is there a second off for the motion? Councillor Turri? Uh, councillor Valella, would you like to speak?
Yeah, um, thank you councillor, um, oh, sorry, yes.
Thank you, thank you councillor Turri. Uh, look, this is pretty straightforward. Um, we've the, uh, if you go, it goes back to when there was a, um, a, a notice of motion that I put forward, uh, looking at, um, different way, different, uh, memorials, um, ideas for a memorial to honour the, um, outstanding, uh, legacy of, um, of the late councillor Gaetano Greco. Um, there were some, um, considerations put forward, um, the officers, uh, put forward a, a report which is now public. And one of the, uh, one of the suggestions or recommendations was that we, um, we meet with the, with the family so that the family has some input. Now, I think that's a very gracious and appropriate thing to do. So, um, what, uh, what I've got there in the proposed motion is number one, that we, we note the various options to honour Gaetano Greco. Number two, not that there, but there was a petition table that was referred to, um, during the submissions earlier this evening. Um, and number three, that we, that I, we nominate the mayor and myself to lead the consultation with councillor Greco's family, uh, together with an officer nominated by our chief executive officer. And then the chief executive officer or the nominated officer will then put together a report uh, and we request that this matter be returned to council in March 2026 for formal consideration and endorsement of an approach once consultation with Mr Greco's family has taken place. With, or I think it is, um, appropriate, respectful and, uh, the right thing to do. It is a very difficult, um, conversation to have with the family. It's actually even difficult to think that Gaetano, um, is no longer a part of the Darabben community and leading in his, um, uh, inspiring way. It's just very difficult to even, um, uh, imagine that. So is with a heavy heart that, um, that, uh, I, I move this motion and I want to thank the officers for being really sensitive, um, and respectful to myself and, 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 and and the Darabben community that Gaetano served, um, and his legacy in inviting the family to, to be a part of it. And I know that the officers just were really sensitive in the way that they approached even myself. Um, and it's very, very, very thoughtful, very touching, um, and, uh, and I, I thank you from the bottom of my heart. Um, it's going to be a difficult discussion to have with Susanna. Uh, and hopefully everyone, and hopefully, um, we will come to, uh, a satisfactory and fitting, um, memorial to honour what has been an enormous, uh, contribution to the city of Darabben, many of which, um, many people don't even know how much he's contributed. But anyway, um, thank you officers and, uh, thank you councillor Turri.
Thank you councillor Valella. Uh, councillor Turri, would you like to speak to the motion?
I'll reserve my right for the time being, thank you.
Are there any speakers, um, in opposition to the motion? Are there any other speakers? Councillor Turri, would you like to speak to the motion?
Not in the absence of any other speakers, I'll...
Thanks. Um, so I'll put the item to vote. All those in favour? So that's councillor Turri. Oh, it's carried unanimously. Thank you. Uh, moving on to the next report we have to consider and that's 9.8 Melbourne Water Flood Mapping Release Submission from Council. I note that earlier we had a submission from, uh, David Taylor regarding this item. Councillors, do we have any questions of officers? Um, yep. Um, so I will ask for a motion. Is councillor Valella?
Yes.
9.8.
9.8. Sorry, I'm just updating, um, 9.8. Thank you.
Do we have a second?
I know, it's a long one.
Seconded by councillor Connie Bogliss. So does the mover wish to speak?
Yes, thank you, thank you through you, Mayor. Look, we've all had a chance to, all the councillors have had a chance to read through it. And we had the very knowledgeable David Taylor presenting a submission on this very topic. I'm not an expert in flooding, but I've learnt a lot speaking to David and reading the officer's report. And basically, just in the nutshell, the additions there in red is just basically to take the mapping that Melbourne Water is doing to the next level. Melbourne Water needs to also take some responsibility for mitigating what floods that have happened in especially the south of Darabben. And as David pointed out, it's just going to get worse with the global, global change, climate change, sorry. So we really do need to just step up the communication with Melbourne Water to say, okay, we've got the maps, this is great, now we've got to take it further, you have to come to the party. We have to invest in mitigating what's going to be really expensive work that needs to be done. And so that's pretty much what it's about. If we could just move, can we just raise it so that we can see the last point? Yeah, so I think number nine is really important, right to, sorry, number eight. Right to Melbourne Water recommending that with council as a member, because council needs to advocate, a working group be set up to undertake the prioritisation of flood mitigation works in Darabben to achieve improvement of the most serious flooding problems in Darabben. We need to engage with Melbourne Water, we need to be a participant in the dialogue. They give out the maps, that's lovely, thank you. Okay, now what are we going to do about it? And we can't just let it all, let Melbourne Water take control of it. We have to push it along because they're not going to unless we do. And it's going to be expensive and costly, but also it's going to actually impact on a lot of families and individuals if we don't do the right thing and make Melbourne Water a little bit more responsible, a little bit more accountable. Thank you.
Councillor Turri, would you like to speak to the, oh, councillor Bogliss, sorry, there's a second.
That's okay, we're close by. I think councillor Valella has said it all, I'll reserve my right, thank you, Mayor.
Are there any other speakers to the motion?
I just want to say this is a very prudent amendment. I think there were various iterations of it, but I think what we finally landed on is very prudent. I hope that in terms of the working group to undertake flood mitigation works is a model, if it does indeed get off the ground, that's adopted in other LGAs as well. Because we obviously know it's not just a Darabben issue, it's a broader issue across the state. And in terms of, to use councillor Valella's words, we need Melbourne Water to come to the party. It's not just about, well, this is the problem, go off and fix it Darabben or whichever other LGA we're talking about. They need to work with us to help us deal with the flooding risks that oppose to us as a result of climate change. And I think that it is, as I said, a very prudent one and I am very happy to support it.
Thank you. Were there any other speakers to this item? Councillor O'Brien?
Thank you, Mayor. Just to add, yes, we know that drainage and other mitigation works in our community will be really important. And so good that the submission calls that out and we're being more explicit about it in the motion before us. I just think in terms of the working group, it will be good that we will have our expert officers in the mix of that who will bring other lenses to it. So our planning lens, our climate emergency lens, all of these things interact, nothing is in isolation. And we have to look at these things holistically and plan for the future in that way. Thank you.
Thanks councillor Brian. Any other speakers for this item? Councillor Bogliss, would you like to speak to the motion as the second?
I'll reserve my right, thank you.
No worries, I'll move on to the vote, all those in favour of this item? And that's carried unanimously. The next report this evening is item nine point nine, Applications to the Victorian Government Pick My Park Grant Programme. Councillors, do you have any questions to officers? Okay, so do we have a mover of the motion, councillor Laris? Oh, is there a second?
Thank you, Mayor.
Sorry, councillor Talcus as the second. Councillor Laris, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yep, thank you. So councillors, I stand in support of ratifying both of these applications to Pick My Park, to Pick My Park Programme. So that's both for A G Davis Park in Preston and also for the Henderson Park in Thornbury. As you know, this programme began with residents nominating parks, they wanted it improved. We now, as a council, have the position, we're in the position to be able to partner with government and nominate some of the parks that that most met the guidelines before they go out again to the community for their next round of consultation. So I'm very pleased that council is applying to co-fund two projects that reflect what we've already been hearing directly from our community. So only recently, I think it was maybe October in this chamber, we had some residents asking us questions in relation to Henderson Park and the need for upgrades. And in Central Ward, many residents have spoken to me in relation to the lack of shade and plantings in A G Davis Park. Particularly, I think there were some older trees that had to come down because they weren't safe, probably about eighty months or so ago, but that really exacerbated that shade problem. And they had previously also brought a petition to council about that. So as a result of this, local residents tell us that they've been driving to other parks, other areas of open space and you know, alternatively keeping their kids indoors on hot days or cold days and not using the park as much as it could be used. Both of these parks are identified by our open space strategy as being areas of open space need. And both locations are expected to experience population growth as part of the Victorian Government's Activity Centre Programme. The proposed improvements are thoughtful and they're community centred. In both parks, a newly sheltered barbecue and picnic area next to player spaces will give families a comfortable place to gather, to allow them to stay there longer with much provided, much needed protection from the elements. Additional plantings and landscaping will increase the shade, boost amenity and improve climate resilience, including refuge from the weather and biodiversity benefits. The A G proposal additionally includes an expanded nature play area and a significant number of additional trees, while the Henderson Park application identifies the renewal of the perimeter path and also the long jump run up and pit. So these projects directly to respond to what residents have asked us, they strengthen the quality, accessibility and resilience of our local spaces. So our local open spaces, so I'm very pleased to support this submission and hope that you all will too. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Laris. Councillor Talcus as the second, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you, Mayor, and congratulations on your mayoralty. I haven't said it in the chamber yet. Just, I want to start by thanking our officers for getting this work done on such a short timeframe. And I just wanted to say it's great to see that council is leveraging grants to help council deliver more with our limited funds for our community. And I hope everybody can support this. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Talcus. Are there any other speakers to this item? Oh, sorry, councillor Sangstow, sorry. Would you like to speak to the motion?
That's okay, yeah, it's very hard me being up on the screen, my apologies, yeah. I'll just speak briefly, Mayor, thank you. I just wanted to celebrate this recommendation, this, this two new parks or parks that are going to be revitalised and filled with new life. It's simple, it's powerful, it's creating places where community can gather and rest and celebrate. The proposed upgrades which have already been named are going to be transforming these parks into spaces where people can connect and celebrate. There's going to be more shade, more shelter, more greenery. This is what makes our public spaces resilient and welcoming and alive, not just for people but for our ecology. Green spaces fill our lungs with life and revitalise our spirits. These improvements are going to strengthen our response to the impacts of the climate crisis, offering cooler refuges so that the children which apparently are being kept inside can suddenly be released into the wild of the park under the shade of the trees. Committing matching funding in the twenty twenty six, twenty twenty seven budget should these grants succeed. We're simply honouring our longstanding commitment to renew and enhance our parks for everyone. So this is responsible planning, it's shared investment with the state government and it's community building at its best. So I'm delighted to be part of recommending this. Thank you.
Wonderful, thank you councillor Sangstow. Are there any other speakers to this motion? If there's no other speakers, I'll put the item to vote, all those in favour of item nine point one zero. That's carried unanimously, thank you. Moving on to nine, item, oh, that was nine point nine, sorry, now we're moving on to nine point one zero. So this item is your street, your say, round one consultation summary and top twenty locations with draft concept plans. Councillors, do you have any questions to the officers regarding this item? No? Oh, councillor Turri?
Just a brief question. In terms of the consultation, there's a reference to mailing out to properties in the vicinity of projects. Is that in the vicinity of all twenty projects?
Thank you for your question through you, Mayor Dimitriadis. That is in vicinity of all twenty locations, yes. Thank you.
Are there any further questions? Given that there's no further questions, we will commence debate. Once the debate is commenced, we can no longer ask any questions. So do we have a mover for this motion? Councillor Jelly?
Thank you, Mayor. I've got a motion that I circulated earlier today that I'd like to move, thank you.
Do we have a second for the motion? Councillor Alex Sangstow. Councillor Jelly, would you like to speak to the motion as the mover?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. In moving this motion tonight, I note that it has, it has taken quite a long time for this group of projects to come to us for consideration in the chamber. This list of projects is a snapshot of what people experience every day. Streets that don't feel safe, crossings that don't work and routes that don't connect. These are not minor inconveniences, they are barriers that shift to the shift we all say that we want, which is a Darabben where sustainable transport is the easy choice. I note in particular that there have been a number of concerns raised about cycling safety along Arthurton Road. And I note that Arthurton Road is not listed as a key cycling route in either council or state government strategic cycling plans, which raises the question of whether our current plans adequately meet the need of people who are riding in Darabben. It seems from this report that the answer is no. One way that we can align our current approach to identifying and supporting cycling routes that provide convenient connections for our community, there's one for you, is to consult with the Department of Transport and Planning to revisit the strategic cycling corridors plan, which currently identifies Beaver's Road, which is just to the north of Arthurton Road, as the best route to connect riders between High Street and the Mary Creek. And so that's the substance of why I'm asking for those items in red, particularly at point two B of the motion there, councillors. So this brings me to a broader point. While the Your Street Your Say programme gives residents a voice, I do have some concerns about its approach. Fixing individual trouble spots identified by community members is important. But if we only respond to isolated requests, we risk missing the bigger picture. Our transport strategy, our walking strategy, our safe travel strategy and our climate emergency plan all call for a connected, sustainable transport network that prioritises walking and public transport. That's how we achieve mode shift. That's how we cut emissions. That's also how we make our streets safer for everybody. And as is noted in this report, it's not just council managed roads, local roads that our community has been identified as being unsafe. A range of arterial roads are in need of safety improvements as well. And these are called out in the report as being projects that we will advocate for to the state government and for the state government to invest to ensure that people are safe regardless of what sort of road they are trying to cross or travel on. It's important to acknowledge that our capital works budget is constrained and quite reliant on developer contributions to deliver street safety improvements. So investing in these corridors will ensure that people are safe no matter what road they travel on. So I urge you to support this motion and help us to achieve some better strategic alignment for the benefit of all of our community. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Jelly. Councillor Sangstow, would you like to speak to the motion?
I know, I reserve my right, thank you.
Are there any speakers against the motion? No, are there any other speakers? Councillor Laris?
Thanks, Mayor. So tonight we're being asked to endorse, oh, I've got the wrong thing here. Excuse me. Let's continue on.
Oh, sure, well, do we have any other speakers, councillor O'Brien?
Thank you, I will fill the silence. So, yeah, I did want to just briefly acknowledge what we've heard from our community through round one of engagement as we prepare to grab for further feedback. And the overall message was clear to us. Pedestrian and cycling safety and the impact of speeding cars are the biggest concerns across our neighbourhoods. People want to feel safe walking and riding and right now, many do not. One of the strongest themes was the difficulty and danger of accessing the St George's Road by shared path. This is a critical north-south corridor heavily used by commuters and families and yet it remains unsafe. Residents have raised their concerns about this to us and the state government for years. And recent critical mass ride to this location with a significant turnout of people again showed just how serious the concern is. Boulderwood Parade and Broadway and Reservoir also featured strongly. And anyone familiar with the dreaded roundabout here knows why. Its proximity to the leisure centre, the neighbourhood house and nearby public housing means that safety here is non-negotiable. But unfortunately, because these sites are, sit on state managed roads, council can't intervene directly or alone. And that is why they've been identified as key advocacy priorities in the report. And I wish these areas were within our control, but given that they're not, I support the strongest possible advocacy. Again, I reiterate that these issues are not new and this process gives us yet another clear mandate to push harder. We want to make sure that the members local to our area are listening and that they are ready to act to ensure safety on our roads. And it's also notable in the report how many concerns relate to accessing the Mary and Darabben Creek corridors. This tells us something important. Our community deeply values active transport, nature and safe access to those green spaces. And people want to ride more and the more we and other levels of government enable this, the more cars we take off our already congested roads. The programme paired with strong targeted advocacy is a critical step towards safer, healthier, more connected neighbourhoods. And I look forward to hearing more from the community about their opinions on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Laris, would you like to review?
Sorry, I'm getting the hang of this room. Look, I didn't have much to say, but I just wanted to add, I guess, my support to the motion, but particularly to endorse the Your Street Your Say Group C report relating to the reservoir east, Preston East and Northcote West. And whilst I agree that this has maybe not been the most, you know, the best kind of process in terms of Your Street Your Say, this now finalises the whole of Darabben. And so we can then start to think about how we do it differently in future. But I think this does, we have got from, in this report, findings from the first round of consultations where community members were able to identify areas that they felt were of highest need. But importantly, that then went to our team who put it you know, to the transport team who have also put a lens over it and made sure that we're also looking at things like safety, for example. So I think it's a list that's worthy of consideration and it's definitely going to go back out to the community for feedback. And I have to say, I was pleased to see Wood Street at the top of the priority list. That crossing has been the subject of a petition, but it's also near a couple of schools and I think is a really high priority project for a lot of people in our community. But, yeah, really look forward to hearing what the community feeds back this time when it goes out to them. We will no doubt have some differing opinions, there are some projects there that I think will probably have more than others. But I think. have more than others. Um, but I think, uh, I really am, would like to throw my support behind this motion tonight. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Alaris. Um, are there any other speakers? Councillor Sangster, would you like to speak to the motion? Okay, if there's no further speakers, I'll put the item to vote. All those in favour? And that's carried unanimously. Okay, so we're moving on to item nine point one one, High Street Streetscape Upgrade Final Concept Plan. I note that earlier we had a submission from, uh, Kerman regarding this item. Councillors, do you have any questions? Uh, yes, councillor Jelly?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Mayor, um, through you. Um, so I noted that Cameron's, um, submission was really seeking for the inclusion of, um, bike lanes in this design and I'd just like to get some, um, some further clarification and confirmation from officers about, uh, what are the, the challenges? Um, and is it just about the, um, the road space and, uh, the, the median? Um, in terms of trying to fit in, um, a, a bike lane. And I remember specifically that, um, Cameron's, um, submission was, uh, calling for us to consider, um, the removal of, um, of car parking as a possible option. So if we can get some information from officers, that would be much appreciated. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you for your question, councillor. Uh, you may. Okay, yeah. So with regards to provision of the bike lane, the main thing is obviously the median, um, is occupying a lot of the road space. If we were to keep the median and still add a bike lane, uh, we would not be able to widen the footpath in pa- in fact, we would have to reduce the footpath width to accommodate the bike lane and retain the car parking. The other option is removal of the car parking, which means we can put a bike lane in, but, uh, car parking has to be removed across the entire length of High Street on both sides.
Could I ask a follow-up question or two, please, Mayor? Um, thank you, through you, Mayor. Um, so with, uh, the removal of car parking on one particular side, what have we heard from, um, our community advisory groups and, um, and other community groups that have been engaged in discussing these plans with us about what potential hazards that might pose?
Thank you for the question and through you, Mayor. Um, was that around removal of car parking and the hazards due to the removal of car parking? Uh, yeah, sure. Um, one of the main things is that people won't be able to park on the street, um, on High Street. That is the main issue. The other would be no loading zones on High Street as well. So shops who rely on loading spots on High Street will not be able to load their goods from High Street. They might have to park their vehicles either on one of the side streets. Not all shops have access to rear lanes. So some of the shops that have access to rear lanes, they can potentially use the rear lanes and some of them do right now to load the goods, but the other shops won't be able to use it.
Thank you. Are there further questions? Nope. Um, do we have a mover of this motion? Councillor Christine Alaris? Is that the main motion on the screen?
Uh, well, it's the top one, but I presume there might be, um, an amendment.
Is that one? Is that one? Yep. Uh, uh, councillor Arturri is the seconder. Uh, councillor, uh, Christine, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yes, I would. Thank you. Um, so colleagues, tonight we're being asked to endorse the final concept design for the High Street Streetscape Upgrade, an important and I think genuinely exciting project for this busy civic and retail precinct. The final concept design set out a welcoming, safer, greener and more accessible High Street. One that truly reflects the way our community uses and values this space. It strengthens safety for pedestrians, it improves accessibility and enhances the visual character of the street. It's a dark design that I think will make High Street a more enjoyable place to spend time. Whether you're shopping, meeting friends, commuting or simply getting, um, from A to B. We're talking more trees, more greenery, better lighting, additional raised crossing points and more places to sit, gather and enjoy outdoor dining. A street that scape, that, uh, supports local traders, reduces shop vacancies, boosts the night time economy and fosters, I hope, real civic pride. Importantly, it also prepares us for the future as our community continues to grow. So currently the project's, uh, got a, a large, um, bill. It's, it's estimated to cost between seven point two and seven point five million over three years. We have one, four point one allocated in the current capital programme. So delivering the full design, we will rely on securing partnerships and external funding. So that's why it's so important that we get this endorsed, um, tonight. Uh, I think it, um, it will give us a more detailed design and, um, enable then the CEO and Mayor to advocate strongly, um, to potential partners, including of course state and federal government, but, but maybe others. Um, so the sooner we get those conversations started, the better, um, the sooner we can secure the funds we need. So this, I think, is a transformational project, one that will set High Street up for the future, that will support local traders and create a more vibrant, accessible and sustainable heart for Preston. I am pleased to support the recommendations and excited for what's ahead.
Thank you councillor Alaris. Um, I just might ask the seconder if they wish to speak first. Um, councillor Arturri, would you like to speak to the motion?
I'll reserve my right, thank you.
Okay. Councillor Jelly?
I'd like to move an amendment to this motion, please. Yes, that's the amendment I wish to move. Thank you, Mayor.
Uh, okey dokey. So. Oh, yes. Uh, does the mover and the seconder, um, agree to this amendment?
I'm just having a read. Thank you. Yes, I'm happy to accept those.
Councillor Arturri?
Yes. But I have questions.
Sure, I believe you can ask a question, uh, in, at the beginning of an amendment. Uh, would you like to ask your question councillor Arturri?
Um, yes, my first question is, and forgive my ignorance, um, but what on-road sign marking, I mean, I can imagine what they might look like, but what does that kind of look like?
Thank you for your question through you, Mayor Dimitriadis. Um, the sign, uh, that we've, we've been looked into with DTP, it, it effectively says look on the, on the, um, road surface and it has an image of a car and a cyclist. And it just indicates to drivers to be aware that there are cyclists also using the space. That's a, a standard regulated sign that we've got in other locations in the municipality.
And, sorry, Mayor, can I ask another question?
Yes, of course.
Um, and is the amendment requesting an increase in bicycle parking? Is that specific enough to implement or is that, um, is that just a general ask that is, I guess, what is, what does an increase in bicycle parking mean? Is it one, a hundred? I don't know.
Thank you through you, Mayor Dimitriadis. Um, look, my, my interpretation is that we would be looking to provide the maximum amount of car pa- of sp- bicycle parking that we can. Um, we're not into the phase of doing detailed design work as of yet, which sort of measures out every metre of space and how big chairs are and bicycle hoops and those sorts of things. So through that process, we would be looking to, to have a bigger provision than what we currently do, but we don't have an exact number of.
Um, any further questions? Councillor Arturri, is that acceptable to, as a seconder? Yes, wonderful. So that, the amendment has now been accepted by the mover and the seconder and becomes this part of the substantive motion. Um, can I please have the substant- oh, yep, so it's on the screen? Um, are there any other councillors who'd like to speak to the substantive motion? Councillor Jelly?
Yes, I'd like to speak to this one. Thank you very much to, um, councillor Alaris and councillor Arturri for, um, accepting these, uh, changes. Um, so as, as we've seen on the screen here, what we're asking for is, um, for, i- in the event that we aren't able to include bike lanes, we've heard the reasons why it's literally physically difficult and why it presents a lot of, um, issues for our community. Um, I, uh, would hope to see that we can design a street, um, that ensures that people can feel, uh, safer and to ensure that drivers are aware that they might come across somebody riding a bicycle. Um, it shouldn't really be, um, it shouldn't be news here in Darabin, given that one of our marketing slogans is, as I hold it up here, we've got, all got one of these in our show bags when we first started as councillors. Darabin loves bikes. Um, although sometimes I'm not convinced that, um, everybody in Darabin does love bikes. Our decision-making as councillors is about choices and the choices that we have had before us, um, in, uh, this High Street concept design has unfortunately framed, um, placing bike lanes in competition with a median strip that provides shady trees and refuge for pedestrians who are crossing the road against, um, uh, against one another, um, as though that they are two mutually exclusive things. But, um, I'm here to say as somebody who rides bikes and loves trees, um, I love riding on a shady path. Um, and, uh, a lot, everybody in our community really enjoys, um, shaded, uh, trees in all of our activity centres. And we've heard, uh, concerns of our community members, um, in the chamber here tonight as well. And back to the theme of choices, road user vulnerability can be measured on a scale from the most to the least vulnerable. And what we have here is, um, a discussion around, well, a, a design that enables the least, the most vulnerable, as in people who are walking and wheeling, uh, to be accommodated in the street and those who are most protected, but very little for people in the middle. Um, and I really hope that in future we can see, um, road designs, um, and road treatments and significant projects in Darabin safely and effectively accommodate all of the vulnerable road users. That includes people walking, wheeling and cycling. Thank you.
Thanks councillor Jelly. Uh, councillor Bogliss? Yep.
Thank you through you, Mayor. Um, firstly, thank you to officers for this massive and extensive, um, and inclusive consultation process. Uh, hundreds of people participated with online survey responses, pop-ups and focus groups with local businesses. It's real meaningful engagement and as a chair of the Active and Healthy Aging Advisory Committee, I appreciate that the lived exp- uh, lived expertise of the committee's insight was brought to the table. The importance of safe crossings for older residents, more seating, more shade and quieter, slower streets for our active and aging community members, because you do need to feel comfortable walking, resting, shopping and connecting. This draft conceptual plan, uh, reflects many of those ideas with wider footpaths, tree planting and a proposed thirty kilometre speed limit. So this upgrade is not just about infrastructure, it's about making High Street a place for everybody. So I fully support the releasing of these reports for future engagement. Thank you.
Thanks councillor Bogliss. Are there any other speakers to this item? Oh, if there are no further speakers to the item. Oh, actually councillor Arturri, would you like to speak? Okay, so moving on to the vote, all those in favour of this item? Uh, that's carried unanimously. The next report we have on the agenda is item nine point two, Kendall Harding Street Shared Path Bridge Design. Councillors, do you have any questions of officers regarding this item? Nope. So is there a mover of the motion? Councillor Sangster and seconded by councillor Jelly. Uh, councillor Sangster, would you like to speak to the motion?
Uh, yes, thank you through you, Mayor. Um, just like to speak in support of the officer's recommendation. This project is about more than renewing a very rickety, slightly terrifying bridge to ride bike over. Uh, it's about creating a safer, more accessible passage for everyone who walks, rides or rolls, uh, along the Mary Creek. The current bridge has reached the end of its life. It's too narrow, it's too fragile. It's a bit sort of, um, like being in a, you know, movie where you're trying to get to the other side. Uh, and it's no longer fit for the thousands who rely on it. So a renewed wide and shared path bridge is not just an upgrade, it's an invitation to move through our city and through our council areas with confidence and care. Safe bike riding is one of the simplest and most powerful ways we can respond to the climate crisis. We've heard quite a bit about bikes already this evening, which is fantastic. Every ride taken instead of a drive eases congestion, reduces emissions and makes our streets kinder and safer for all road users. When we build the right infrastructure, we open the door to more people choosing the cleaner, healthier way to travel. When I said open the door, I was suddenly flung back into being car doored a few months ago, um, which I wouldn't have had to do if there was an appropriate bike path in the city, which there wasn't. So this design reflects years of community input and collaboration with Marybeck. It's thoughtful, technically sound and grounded in what people have told us they need. The community has spoken. We at here in Darabin and Marybeck have listened. So for these reasons and with gratitude to the community who have advocated, I'm proud to support the officer's recommendation.
Thanks councillor Sangster. Councillor Ruth Jelly, would you like to speak to the motion?
I'll reserve my right. Thank you, Mayor.
Sure. Are there any other speakers to the motion? Councillor Bogliss?
Councillor Jelly, you were so quick. Um, uh, Mayor and fellow councillors, um, and officers, thank you so much, um, for the fierce work, um, and the cross-council collaboration with Marybeck to, uh, get to the point of design for this, uh, Kendall Harding Shared Path and Bridge Renewal Programme. Uh, having walked and cycled along these paths for years, I know firsthand, uh, how important this connection is for decades, families and commuters and older residents have relied on this, uh, bridge, um, as, as councillor Sangster said, rickety. Um, I too note that. Um, and the community has been clear that the current timber bridge is just no longer safe or accessible. Um, I want to acknowledge the extensive community consultation and this was undertaken before our term councillors dating back in twenty twenty one. Residents, local stakeholders and Darabin Advisory Committees have provided thoughtful feedback, which has been carefully incorporated into this design and accessibility, safety and community amenities have all been considered, from the wider paths for mobility devices and prams to seating, lighting and landscapes. And this connects us between Preston right through to Coburg. This bridge is a vital community link and I commend officers for their thoughtful engagement process and I fully support the recommended design and budget adjustment to make this project a reality. Uh, thank you.
Thank you councillor Bogliss. Are there any other speakers tonight? Councillor Ruth Jelly, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yes, thank you through Mayor. Um, that was a real word salad. Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, councillor Bogliss, thank you very much for, uh, what she's just said about the, um, the important role that this bridge plays in terms of connecting, uh, Darabin and Marybeck. Uh, and the reason why that is important is because, uh, people who, uh, and particularly the families, um, really heavily utilise this bridge. It is a vital link to provide access to Coburg High School. For some families in Darabin, Coburg High is the closest high school for them. They are in the catchment zone for that. Um, and this is a, a, a key connection point to allow children to get to school safely across the Mary Creek. And it goes the other way as well. So there are families in Marybeck who rely on that connection to get into Darabin as well. And I want you all to think about, um, not the, um, the cost, um, of this project. I want you to think about the partnership that this represents between, um, us and our neighbours over in Marybeck. And I also want you to think, um, about the, um, the reinvigorating experience that we can provide for residents in this area for something as simple as being able to cross through the Mary Creek. Walking somewhere, riding somewhere, going on a walk with your child on a pram, seeing the trees, hearing the water bubbling down the stream. Oh, I'm getting emotional myself now. Hearing birds singing down through the creek, seeing how nature changes from one season to another, in the seasons that the Warrangree Warroon people have known and loved and cared for and observed and spoken about for millennia. And this is what this project is. It is not just a bridge that connects one side to the other. It is a pathway to a place that will sit within our hearts, our imaginations, uh, and engages, it allows everybody to engage very simply every day in nature. Thank you.
Uh, thanks councillor Jelly. Uh, if there's no further debate, I'll put the item to vote. All those in favour? And that's carried unanimously. The next report we have to consider this evening is item nine point one three, Climate Emergency Plan Energy Support Programme. Uh, noting that earlier we had a submission from Karen in relation to this item. Councillors, do we have, um, any questions of officers? Uh, councillor O'Brien?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, just would like to, um, ask officers to help us, um, anybody watching, better understand the criteria, um, that are contained within the report, particularly around the sixty criteria that are contained within the report, particularly around the 60,000 average dollars average income and how that relates to various concessions as it identifies the community that we're particularly hoping to engage in the programme. Thank you.
Yes. Hi, thank you, Steve.
Thank you, mayor and through you. Thank you councillor O'Brien for the question. The 60,000 average or the $120,000 threshold per household is based on median household income from the most recent AVS census. So at that level, about 50% of households would fall within the eligibility threshold. And so that provides an additional opportunity for households to be eligible. So without holding, so for those households who don't have, hold a healthcare card, a pensioner or federal concession or a Veterans Affairs gold card, then that income threshold is another opportunity for eligibility. So both can apply.
Thank you. Any other questions? Given that there's no further questions, we will commence debate. I remind you that once we enter the debate, there'll be no other questions. Do I have a mover for the motion? Councillor O'Brien?
Yes, thank you, mayor. I have a motion that I shared with people earlier today and it looks quite confronting, there's so much red. But just to say that the first point is to correct an element within the report that officers wanted us to incorporate. And that's just clarifying some of that eligibility criteria. And then the second elements are things that I will talk to in my speech. Thank you.
Sure. Do we have a second, councillor Alaris? Okay, so would the mover like to speak?
Yes, I will, thank you, mayor. Hands everywhere, I love it. So yes, tonight we're considering the endorsement of the new Darabben Energy Upgrade Programme. It's a practical targeted initiative that will deliver real benefits for our community for at least the next 12 months. And this programme was secured through the council plan in June. And while its design has taken longer than expected, much of that delay reflects the seriousness with which officers approached the task. Darabben has long been a leader in this space. Our Solar Saver Programme set the standard across the state and beyond. Just last week, through the climate risk training pilot delivered by the Municipal Association of Victoria, I heard directly from other councils who consider us the benchmark for local climate action. That is something we can all be proud of. Being a leader means constantly lifting our own standards and officers have engaged widely across the sector and drawn on expert advice within our Climate Emergency Darabben Advisory Committee to ensure just that. We should acknowledge and honour the significant work that has brought us to this point. The programme before us is strong, but the motion strengthens it further by ensuring it is even more inclusive and better reflects the real household structures in Darabben. The proposed updates to eligibility criteria encompass share houses and families who may have multiple adult earners, households navigating the pressures of housing affordability and cost of living. Renters in particular often face higher costs because they have least control over making upgrades. Broadening eligibility within this cohort makes this programme fairer and more effective. There is also a need to ensure continuity of effort here. Because the start is later than planned, we cannot afford to miss the upcoming budget cycle. If we delay, we risk losing momentum, creating rework and undermining the substantial effort officers and our community have already contributed to. The motion notes the intent to safeguard any unspent funds, carrying them forward and protecting the programme's outcomes for 12 months from commencement. Finally, by embedding further consideration of the programme into the upcoming 2026/27 budget development process, yes, it's almost upon us already, it's terrifying. But I want to make it clear that this is not intended to be a one-off initiative if we can help it. It should be a central part of delivering on strategic direction four of our council plan, climate leadership and response and the key actions of our climate emergency plan that support this. And given how close we came earlier this year to allocating no direct budget to this critical work and these particular elements of energy support, the deep disappointment that that caused in our community, I want us to give us the strongest pathway possible to meet the expectations of our residents and local businesses. I'm genuinely excited about the programme. It is about fairness, it is about accessibility and it's about meaningful climate action and cost of living relief delivered directly to the homes and lives in our community. Thank you.
Councillor Alaris, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yeah, thank you, mayor. Colleagues, I'm pleased to speak in strong support of the Darabben Energy Upgrade Programme. In 2025, you remember that we committed $200,000 to create a new energy support programme that tackles the climate emergency while putting low income households at the centre of our transition. We know that there are many in our community who want to electrify their homes, lower their bills and improve comfort, but face real barriers, cost, complexity and lack of trusted advice. This programme directly addresses those barriers. It aims to make the shift to clean energy fairer and help prevent energy hardship. It will do this by making homes more comfortable, lowering power bills and improving financial and health resilience for low income households. And of course, it will decrease emissions. It offers free tailored energy advice for homes and businesses for everyone in Darabben and clear pathways to electrification and support to navigate state and federal rebates of many types. It also connects residents with high quality installers for insulation, draft proofing, split systems, rooftop solar, heat water pumps, sorry, hot water heat pumps and batteries, EV charging and even induction cooktops. Importantly, it provides targeted financial support. So low income households, including renters, will be able to access up to $3,500 in rebates for any of those types of items, as well as a one-off payment to cover gas disconnection fees. For many households, this will be, will mean being warmer in winter, it'll be being cooler in summer and hundreds of dollars saved each year. This is climate action with multiple benefits, cutting emissions, improving health and thermal comfort and reducing exposure to energy hardship. It's practicable, it's practical, equitable and reflects our commitment to climate leadership and supporting the most affected by rising energy costs. It will also complement some other programmes such as the Keep Cool Programme, which focuses on vulnerable communities as well. So I wholeheartedly support the Darabben Energy Upgrade Programme and thank officers for their thoughtful, community centred design. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Alaris. Are there any other speakers? Councillor Jellie?
Yes, please, through you, through you, mayor. I wonder if we can scroll down and see some of the beginning of the motion, please, before I begin speaking. Scroll up maybe, up down. And while we're doing that, I just wanted to point out that as councillor O'Brien mentioned earlier, the Darabben Council Solar Saver Programme has been a leader in our state and our nation. And one of the councils that has copied our invitation, being the final form of flattery, our Solar Saver Programme just last week announced that they have entered into Victoria's very first energy support programme with an apartment building, where there are more than 20 apartments have all signed up to have shared access to solar energy through panels on their roof and also a battery for storage. Now, the reason I mention this, this is really, really important for my community in South Central in particular. And I'll read out some statistics from the Australian Bureau of Statistics for you. And that is that 41% of all of the households, all of the housing in South Central Ward is apartments or flats, units. And overall, that represents 60, nearly over 64% of all of the housing in South Central Ward is in this medium and high density area. So, and we know from our Solar Saver Programme that the two cohorts that are most difficult to reach with these energy support programmes are multi-unit dwellings and also renting households that are renting. There are a number of barriers in there. So I really hope that what we can see with this programme in this iteration and also as it continues, hopefully, as we start to consider what this might look like to be expanded beyond the 30th of June next year, is how we can develop collaborative relationships with landlords and also with body corporate organisations in order to ensure that those that are hardest to reach have an equal opportunity to participate in this programme. Thank you.
Thanks councillor Jellie. Any other speakers? Councillor Bogliss?
Thank you through you, mayor. I won't reiterate what other councillors have said, but I thank them and I won't repeat it to the chambers again. But just in addition, I'd particularly like to acknowledge the work done with our community in the Climate Emergency Advisory Committee to ensure that the programme reaches those who need it. This programme is about equity, it's about fairness and it's about giving everyone in Darabben the tools, the choices, also to improve their home and their health and wellbeing into the future. So this initiative shows Darabben Council leading with practical, community focused action on the climate emergency and I support the adoption today. Thank you.
Wonderful. Are there any other speakers? Nope. I'll put the item to vote. All those in favour? And that's carried unanimously. The next report we have is item 9.14, the Governance Report for November 2025. Councillors, do you have any questions? Do we have a mover for the motion? Would anyone like to move the governance report? It's very exciting. Okay, councillor Arturi, thank you. And councillor Salcos is seconding. Okay, would you like to speak to the motion?
Oh, with great enthusiasm and passion. Thank you, mayor, and thank you to everyone, all the councillors who wanted to second it and jump at the opportunity to second this motion. As always, it's a very important report that we have every month, of course, and thank you to officers for preparing it. It, of course, gives the community a summary of our attendances at community meetings and also incorporated later on what we've been doing over the course of the last month or so. And noting, I think, from the last couple of governance reports, the status on petitions, which is, I think, important for transparency in the community when it comes to the issues that they have raised directly with us in a meeting via the tabling of a petition. I think they're generally the highlights. I don't want to go into too much detail in the interest of time again and I am very supportive of the motion, I hope everyone else is too. Thank you.
Thanks for that councillor Arturi. Councillor Salcos, would you like to speak to the motion?
I reserve my right.
Would anybody else like to speak? Oh, councillor O'Brien?
Thank you, mayor. Just to very quickly add, one of the things councillor Arturi mentioned was the activity reports that in a quirk of timing, don't go out in the governance report as it goes out publicly to the community. We submit our tally of all that we do in the lead up to this meeting and then they get included in the minutes. So I just wanted to add, so I guess our recent minutes would have had our previous round of activity reports. And in this time that we've had in between, one of the things that we've started to do and so we will start to see reflected in these activity reports is the councillor conversations that we've all recently taken part in. The first one was at Preston Market and the second one was at the Reservoir Library or close to the Reservoir Library. And I believe all of us did manage to participate in that and I think we all found it really valuable in terms of the conversations directly with the community. And we look forward to doing more of those and we look forward to reporting on them as part of monthly activity reports. Thank you.
Excellent. Any other speakers? Nope. Councillor Masili, no. No, I'm not replying. Okay, so I'll put the item to vote. All those in favour? Councillor Bogliss? Yes. So that's carried unanimously. Okay, so we're up to the final report this evening and that's item 9.15. We have the 2024/2025 Annual Outcomes Report for the leisure contracts. Yes, councillor Valella has a question.
Thank you, mayor, through you. Just a quick question. Reservoir Leisure Centre is managed in-house, is that right? That, and that's why it's not included in this list?
Through you, mayor, if I may, yes, that is correct. It's managed in-house, it's not managed by this organisation and this is only one of the contracts with that organisation.
Are there any further questions? Do we have a mover for this motion? Councillor Alaris and a second up? Everyone's up. Councillor Jellie? Councillor Alaris, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you, mayor. So tonight we're just really being asked to note this report that is of our leisure contract with Club, sorry, with Clublinks. And yeah, I think it's a really interesting report, so encourage the public to have a read as well. But the report shows really how much progress has been made in strengthening the health and wellbeing of our community. So of course, there's five facilities that Clublinks manage for us, Naurangjiri Stadium, the Darabben Community Sports Stadium, two golf courses and NARC. So, so they have done an amazing job this year of delivering on increasing participation, which is such great news, improving access and inclusion and also ensuring high quality sustainable operations. Naurangjiri DCSS, two golf courses and NARC have all recorded strong results. And they've had several of them exceeding participation, participation targets, but also income, which of course is also a good thing for us at Darabben as well. Clublinks have been working in genuine partnership and showing support for access, diversity and inclusion. So for this, for example, they've been working with Aboriginal organisations, with the Queer Sporting Alliance, local sports clubs, health services and community groups to deliver programmes that reach people who often are excluded from traditional recreational opportunities. So we've also seen a strong commitment to sustainability through the work, through their work, local economic benefits and programmes that support equity and inclusion like the midnight basketball that happens there, rainbow pickleball and also providing shower access to rough sleepers. So this report demonstrates real outcomes for our community and I'm very pleased to support the recommendation to note it this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Would the second up like to speak?
Yes, thank you, mayor. Thank you councillor Alaris for that excellent summary of what we have in the report. The reason why I think this is an important thing to do is in related to our strategic direction pillar around transparency. If we're going to have these services provided by a partner, shall we call them, in, in terms of the provision and the management of our leisure centres across Darabben, it is really important for our community to be able to see this public and transparent reporting of how they're tracking against our collective goals and objectives. And as Christine Alaris, sorry councillor Alaris outlined, it's really important that we have these participation goals, particularly for minority groups. So it is an important, not necessarily the most exciting element of our role as councillors, but you know, transparency and governance and oversight. This is how it happens and so I, this is the reason why I support the motion. Thank you.
Thanks councillor Jellie. Is there any other speakers? Councillor O'Brien?
Thank you, mayor. I do just want to draw attention to a couple of things in terms of some of the contracts that are doing better than expected. It's always great to see that partners not resting on the laurels and aiming for greatness in terms of how they're working in our community to deliver for our community. We know NARC is a really strong example of this. And we can see that in its attendance, we can see that in the savings that it's bringing to the community, but also an element of the report that deals specifically with the economic development and cultural considerations. And I'll just mention a couple of these that I think are interesting in terms of how our local businesses are being supported through this contract, through NARC in particular, but this, this would apply in other instances as well. So we have a local coffee provider and roaster that is supported. We have a local brew- We have a local brewery and bar that is supported. We have fruit and vegetables and meat being provided by a local provider. People who are providing our uniforms for our staff are also being supported. So there's a number of other things in there. And because of, I guess, how successful NARC is, we also call out the maintenance and who are helping support us to do the maintenance and that is also some local providers. And so it's really important that we acknowledge that, that it's benefiting those small businesses. It's benefiting the people that work with them. And as a whole, it's supporting the local economy within Darabin. One thing, I guess, just to raise in point of that is I think we've all had conversations about NARC potentially being a little bit of a victim of its own success in terms of the movement of traffic around it. And that is something I just want to make sure the community understands. We are keeping a close eye on and we are having conversations about, we know we need solutions for this. But all up great to see these clubs doing so well. Thank you.
Thanks councillor O'Brien. Are there any other speakers? Nope. I might put the item to vote. All those in favour? And that's carried unanimously. So we're moving on to item 10 and there are no items to be tabled. Item 11, there are no notices of motion to consider this evening. Item 12, which is urgent business, and there are no urgent businesses to consider this evening. And we have item 13, consideration of reports considered confidential. And councillors, there are no consideration of reports to be tabled today that are confidential. And we're at the close of the meeting. So as there is no business to consider this evening, I'd like to declare the meeting closed at 8.32pm. Thank you and good night councillors, officers and community members.